Yeah, because he's not in the office.
He's in Arizona, isn't he?
Yeah. Wednesday.
However you want to do it, Albert.
Okay, so I have Wednesday. You have six on Wednesday, right?
Seven.
Are we ready? Okay, so today is Wednesday, May 29th, 2024, 9:30. We'll call this meeting to order. Nobody said this meeting was properly posted May 17th. We have seven items in front of us today. Row called Mr. Town.
Present.
Ms. Sellers.
Present.
And Ms. Thompson. Okay, so... We have only two people, one on the phone, in these people?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take them since they're here. Well, tell me one more time which number is he?
His.
Person on the phone?
I had a one, two, and three.
Oh. Well, we'll take him. We're taking first. I'll say yes.
His name is Wayne.
Tenenbaum. With the little, yes.
And what's their name?
First Mark Tenenbaum.
Yes, First Mark, yes.
Pat, this is Wayne.
Yes, Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Ms. Thompson. How are you today?
I'm doing fine, how are you doing?
Okay, you've been before us before, right?
Many times, yeah.
Okay, so for the sake of the other people, excuse me, sir, ma'am, sir, what's your name?
Tim.
Tim. Okay, so we're listening up. So this is how this is gonna go. We have another person here who's got four items in front of us. So we're gonna let you go first and tell us why you think your property should be valued the way you should. And then we, where you have suggested, and then we'll hear from the assessor's office, and then we'll give you the last word. And then we will meet, we won't decide today. We will meet on Friday, make our decision, and then send it to you by mail. Okay.
That's fine, which property are we doing first, first?
Well, so we're gonna go by the agenda. So BOE number 473. Materials packing at 6500 South Sunny Lane Road. Account number R143925025. What value would you like for us to attach to your property here?
All right, it's just taking me one second to pull this out. I didn't know what order we're going in, but I got it here. We're at $2 million.
Okay. What were you last year?
What value you're asking was the county at last year or we were at last year?
You were at last year.
I believe around the same number.
Okay, all right.
The same as what the county is asking last year, 3.1, 3,102,849, is what it was last year and what they're asking.
That's right, I have it. So tell me, tell me why you think this property should be valued at $2 million.
Okay, I would know, and I'm surprised that, I think, is it listed there, Tim Grass is there, is that right?
No.
Steve Store, Tim is in Tulsa.
Oh, right, my bad. All right, so yes, last year and this year, we understand the value was 3.1 million, but we still don't understand why the value was that in general. I think maybe the assessor or the board is not looking at this property fairly in the respect of what it really is. This is a property by Old Castle, which is a client of ours throughout the nation. And basically what they do is build, you know, materials, brick, pavers, building materials. And when they build their facilities, they're all owner occupied, they do it as almost a show. It is not a high-end property, metal type construction, et cetera. Not only that, but when they use the property, whether it's the pavement, whether it's the building itself, et cetera, they really get used out of it, in other words. And they do not remodel most of the time, I don't believe they remodeled this one. There's no need for them to, they're really just concerned about their product, which makes sense. The problem is then their real estate value suffers in the sense that I believe that the county and the board is looking at this property as maybe a medium or average industrial property, which it is not. It is built almost like a shell, should be compared to properties that are inferior industrial property, et cetera. So that's why we came up with the using mark sales, the value of 1.9 million, and an income performance of 2.1 million for a general value of about $2 million for this property. And I apologize if there's no page numbers, I believe, in our package, but on the third page, information on the subject, it was built 2017, so it is newer. But again, it has the same issues the way it was built, inferior to other industrial properties, most other industrial properties. The building size, 47,980 square feet, and 9.25 acres of land. But the land's really not a huge issue, meaning yes, there's excess land on the property, but the county only has the land value that's total fairness to that. Most of the value is on the improvement, so it can be compared to other industrial properties, even if they don't have a huge amount of land, because most of the value again on this by the county is on the improvement. Two, over 2.7 million of value of 3.1 is improvement value of the building. Following pages where the subject is located, there's an aerial, there's a front view of the subject. When you get to our sales comparable, which falls under, there's no page. Again, we're on for $64.77 per foot.
Six, 64 or 54?
I'm sorry?
64 or 54?
64, 64.77 per foot.
Okay.
And that's the county value per square foot. Now, if you look at our comps, a couple of them are older, they're not as comparable. A couple of them were, I believe, remodeled, and it says in the CoStar report that when they were renovated, they were renovated recently, in the past five years. We also have a sale of a property that was built in 2019. And these properties are selling for quite a bit less than the subject. So our sale one sold for 39.63 per square foot.
Are you talking about your comps or the assessor's comps?
Oh, ours.
Your comps, okay.
Yes. The first sale sold for 39.63 per square foot, those are modeled in 2018. Our sale number four was built in 2019 and only sold for 14.37 per square foot, I believe. That seems low, but that's what we have. And sale five of ours renovated in 2020 and sold in '22, but renovated in 2020, sold for 43.75 per square foot. So approximately $40 per square foot is the range of kind of what these properties are going for, and we're on for $64 plus per square foot. So quite a bit higher per square foot than the subject. The following pages give where the subject is and the other properties, which all of them are in Oklahoma today except for one in Spencer. We give a full CoStar report, all of the sales that we have, that support a lower value per square foot, and it's not really close, but we're quite at a lower value. We also have an income performance, which unfortunately, again, I don't have page numbers. But either way, in the income performance, we included CoStar pages that give you a general cap rate analysis of the area, vacancy, and we also supply five rental comparables. Five industrial rental comparables that can compare to the subject, and those rental comparables are approximately, we have a grid of that. They range from, I mean, they're pretty, in the range of 3.04 per square foot to 5.25 per square foot, all within that range. And if you go back to our performa analysis, we have used the $5, so we actually use the higher end of the range. We use a low vacancy of 4.8%, strength of 5%, and a cap rate of 10, given what cap rates are going for in that area of industrial property. And then we came with values 2.1 million, a little over 2.1 million. So again, you have the information on our rental comps, you have information on cap rate, vacancy. We're quite a bit lower when we come out using the $5 inventory, and we also have sales that support a lower value, and that concludes our presentation.
Okay. We'll hear from the assessor.
Good morning, Wayne, how are you?
Good morning.
So our, our hearing officer looked at some comparable sales, I believe that they were provided to Mr. Tenenbaum. The property is on nine acres, and we're showing, what, about 43,000 square feet of building? And he is correct, we currently have it on for 64.76 per square foot. The value did not increase this year, same as it was last year. Our comparable sales, you know, they're a little bit above and below. Most of them have less land per acre, like 2.4, less than 3 acres, 3 acres, 3 and 1/2 acres. There's one at 8 acres, but it was a 1998 building. So our median sales price on those was coming up to 72.62 per square foot. The subject has quite a bit of extra paving, can you look at the aerial one again, please? Yeah, see, we have quite a bit of extra paving that are, that's on the property, as well as the building. And then again, being on nine acres, that kind of brings the price per square foot of the overall value of a bid. But we didn't do an income performer or anything, we just looked at those sales. We had a problem with one of his sales, it says that one of his sales has a value, or supposedly sold for a million 79, but we were showing that it sold actually for 1.6 million. That was number five on his sale comparable list, or no, I'm sorry, number four, which brings a pretty low value on it. But most of all, we were, we just looked at what sales we came up with through CoStar and felt like our value was sound based on what it looked like here. And that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Tenenbaum, you get the last word, but what about this comp four? Do you know what the real value of that is?
Yeah, well, the comp four, even if it sold for 1.6 to 1.2 million, it still sold for an incredible amount left per square foot. So I'll go with the, what the county has, and it was still sold for quite a bit less, but it is on the low side. I think in closing, I think it's fair that, you know, the county themselves has a sale that sold for in the mid-40s per square foot. We also have sales in the mid-40s per square foot. So if you take all those sales, including one of the county sales, and if you take county sales that are in the mid-60s, overall, you would get a lower value. Because for some reason, the county included maybe one sale in the mid-40s, and we have more than that. Additionally, I do agree though, that because there's such low land value in this area, you do need to adjust somewhat upwards for the subject having more paving and a larger land size. So instead of the mid-40s, maybe you get up to $50 per square foot, or 52. The point is that you wouldn't get up to over $56 per foot. And also, on top of that, we do have an income approach, which the county does not. So overall, based on both of our sales combined and based on income, there should be a lower value for the subject per square foot, and that's what we have.
Hold on just a second.
Did we get a copy of the assessor's?
Okay, so I looked at, so if you take 50, $52 per square foot, am I multiplying that times 47.905?
Yeah.
And you'll, you'll get about 2 and 1/2 million.
Right.
Is, would the assessor go for the 2 and 1/2 million or not? Are you firm with your?
No, I think our, our sales are reasonable.
It says a reasonable, okay.
That 2 and 1/2 wouldn't include the land, though, would it? You'd have to have that.
Oh, and what, what separate?
The land's only on for 350,000, I think. If the land is cheap in that area.
That would be 2.8. That would bring it up to 2.8? Could you, Mr. Tenenbaum, what do you think of 2.8 million?
I think, I think that's fine, that's fair enough.
Okay.
The assessor's thinking this.
It's, I mean, it's fine, I mean, just, just ask it. Okay, we'll close the hearing on the other.
I just have a quick question, do we have a copy of the assessor's comps in the package? Because I can't, I'm not sure that I'm finding them in here. I see the, the taxpayers' comps, but I'm not sure that I see the assessor's comps. That's what I was saying. I'll have to let you check there and see.
We don't mind if they don't have comps there.
I don't have an answer for that, I don't.
Do you have any questions?
No, could you? Could you get them for us?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I had assumed that they had been sent down.
Well, we do have a copy, so in all fairness, it should be, obviously, included in there.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the hearing on number one on the agenda, BOE number 473. Mr. Tenenbaum, number two on our agenda is BOE number 474. Don't have an address, but the account number is R140562105. Do you have an address on that?
It's taken land.
Oh. Can you tell me in my section or some corner?
It's at Western and Memorial.
Oh, I know where that is.
You'll recognize it.
Okay. Okay, shoot, Mr. Tenenbaum.
All right, so this one's gonna be quicker, because it's just a land parcel, and obviously, we just have land sales as of the county. But I think in the end, if you take all the land sales into account, it will support a lower value because, and I'll wait for final rebuttal, but I believe that two out of the four land comps by the county support a lower value. But as far as our evidence, I'll pull that up here real quick here. Give me one second here. The property itself is valued at 2,590,500. Now, we have a value here based on our comps of 1,200,000, but that does seem low to me. I mean, a more reasonable value might be around 2 million after you take all the comps into account. So I guess we could say that our requested value is closer to 2 million, to be more conservative.
Okay.
The, the price per square foot is $6.31 on 9.42 acres of land. So the size of land is very important. I believe both of us used larger land sales, which is a good thing, to compare to this large parcel. Again, a comp for 6.31 per square foot. The following pages, they're kind of located, there's a couple of aerials of the subject's property being land. When you get to our land comps, which are, we do have page numbers, start up to, on page eight and nine, we have five land sales. But on page eight, we show four of them. On that page, we have the subject at 6.31 per square foot. Now, these land sales range from 2.35 per square foot to 4.70 per square foot. So what's most important about that is they are, the size of them is 8.57 acres to 10 acres, and we are 9.42 acres. So the range of our comps is excellent as far as being almost the same size as the subject, some a little larger, some slightly smaller. But again, they sold for between 2.40 and 4.70, and one for 6.31. And then we have sale five on page number nine. That sale is also similar in size, a little bit larger, 11.56 acres, and it sold for 2.58 per square foot. Now, we did supply a map of the subject and the land sales, keeping in mind that sometimes when you have a large land parcel, some of your comps are gonna be closer than others, because it's hard to find land sales in the past few years that are around 10 acres. But we have more than enough here that we concluded after page 10, page 11, we have the full CoStar report of these commercial land sales, the subject is a commercial land parcel. These are off the land sales. For example, the first land sale we have, 9.77 acres in Oklahoma City, on, on the, it says SBC I-35 Service Road. And again, that one sold for 4.70, so that's a good location, selling for 4.70, TV mile or on for 6.31.
Say the, say the, the north-south location on I-35?
Oh, sure, it says SBC, so I'm not sure, southeast corner, I believe, is what that means.
Oh, I-35 and what?
And, and H-E-F.
Hefner, Hefner, I got it. Okay, so your prop, this is gonna be, it's just two general things, your property, any part of it face out on a main highway, main road, like is part of it on Memorial or part of?
Yes.
Do places on Memorial.
Some aerial, yes, Memorial.
Okay, and the comps that you want us to consider as valid comps, do any of them face on a major street?
Well, I'd have to check, but I'll tell you that our comp one is on the I-35, so that's the major area. But on the main street, have to, northwestern, I don't know, it looks like the second comp is on Northwestern Avenue, which seems like a somewhat of a main street, you would know better than I do.
It is.
And our third comp, that one might be lester of a, that one does not seem like it's on a main road. And our fourth comp does seem like it has some frontage on here. It says it's between Portland Avenue and 178th and May, I don't know, but there's a street, looks like there is a main street there. If you look at our CoStar comp, that one's on page 18, you'll see that it's usually there. And what's interesting is our comp five, looks like it's right on the corner of northwest 150th and Santa Fe, and it looks like it's across the street from the CVS, the 7-Eleven, et cetera. That looks like a very good place to be, a commercial land comp. And that one, again, sold for 1.27 per foot.
Sir, so for what?
I'm sorry?
It, that one, then you're talking about comp five, you're a comp five?
Yes.
And it sold for what, a square foot?
Sold for 2.58 per foot, pretty low. So the reason I was saying, though, initially about comps, is most of which have either, whether it's a corner location in a good area, whether it's main street, whether it's by the freeway, at least one of them does not have that going for it. But in general, they sold for so much less, that's why I was saying, though, if you look at it overall, you'll get to a lower value, even with the county comps, lower than 6.31 per square foot for this almost 10-acre piece of land. But that's all we have for now.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Okay, this subject is on about Western and Memorial Road. This property, there's another property right, right next door to Group One bought, the one to the west of it, right there, Mike, right there, yes. So, now these are, this is a little bit older, but in 2015, they bought that parcel right there, Group One, the same people we're talking about right now. They bought that property for 1.6 million dollars at 8 bucks a foot. They bought the subject property.
That, because he does not in your evidence, we like to object, well, that's new evidence. Is that fair for the board?
Okay.
It's not in their evidence, I'm not sure how to rebut that, then.
Did your, okay, did, you represented Group One?
In 2015, no, I don't believe so.
Yeah.
Was, was that property presented in their comps? Or was that yours? I'm looking at it.
It should be. Is it, is it in, is it in our comps?
It's the address.
It's not, doesn't have an address.
It's not gonna have an address.
Okay. Just anything in, in notes? 2025, oh, are you looking?
But you're not using it as a comp, you're just giving a historical thing, or are you using it as a comp?
I guess the question is, where did you guys come up with 2.5, it looks like that's the same as last year, yeah?
Yes, 'cause the subject, go to 2025, because you have a comp sale on that. Go, go back to the sale of, of the subject, right there, $2.3 million in 2015.
Okay, but it's not in, it's not in our evidence anywhere that it's presented.
No, but the subject property, what, that's, that is in our evidence, the fact that it was purchased in 2015 for 2.3 million. As he's not talking about the one next door, he's talking about the subject.
Yeah, the subject sold for that, yes, okay.
Okay, okay, you're good.
Yes, so, okay, so if, I don't know if he has this document or not, we've sent it to the past, we've sent it to the past in the past. So I can't, I don't, since I didn't prepare this doc, or this, I can't tell you for sure that you gave the guy.
Right, you, right.
Which document are you referring to?
This is document, that's the sales history of those properties right there.
Well, it's on the, it's on your website, right?
As far as the sale of, of the one next door, yes.
Right, but I can't rebut it if I don't see the document, I have four comps that they presented, I'd like them to present their evidence, if that's fair.
Okay, this, you, you're not changing the valuation from last year, right?
No, ma'am, I did not.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, well, so stop me if you don't, okay, so this, but Group One did sell the property next door, you know, and so that is, uh... And they sold that for, let's see here, nine, nine and a half bucks a foot, for 1.9 million dollars, 1.9 million.
I object, that's new evidence, I'm asking the board to rule not to, for them to present evidence, I have a chance for rebuttal. I'm asking them to present four comps.
24.90.
That's fair? But they would have included that comp if they thought it was a good comp, I don't understand, you know?
Okay.
But is that, that's not big one land, right?
It was big.
Oh, it was when it was purchased.
No, but there were issues with that sale, and I can't rebut it because I don't know if that was gonna be presented today.
I don't know.
I want to ask them to do a little bit of a, to have.
It is in our package, but was that not presented in the informal then?
No, I have a list of the four comps they have.
He may, he may not have a copy of this, if he doesn't have a copy of this, then that's fine, then that's fine.
Wait, you sent us four comps, that's all you sent us.
Okay, let's discuss the four comps. Did, whatever this is that he's objected to right now, did it, did it enter into your, well, it did not enter into your evaluation, right? If, if you, yours is the same as it was last year, correct?
This was, perfect, this is what we used last year, yes.
Okay.
And I thought that was included in, here, perfect, I thought it was included in there.
Okay, Mr. Tenenbaum, I got, I have your objection, so let's, let's talk about the other four comps.
Okay, go ahead.
No, you.
Oh. So, I know that Brian looked at these comps, he asked me about them, okay, so I would look at his, okay, the 15 acres at, let's look, I can't tell which, which street location that is.
Right, okay, you see that count number right there?
You're talking about Mr. Tenenbaum's comp?
No, ma'am, these are our comps.
All right, okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can you tell what street this is? Don't look. Santa Fe and Northwest Hundred Fiftyth Street, okay. Right, so it looks like that does not have full frontage on Santa, um, it does have some Santa, uh.
It's L-shaped with part of it on?
Right, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And how many acres is that?
Fifteen acres total, and it looks like they've divided out part of that corner right there since this, since the sale took place.
Okay.
And that sale was for two hundred seventy-seven thousand.
You're looking at one of his comps?
No.
One of your comps?
One of our comps. Yes, this is us.
Which comp is it?
It's number one.
The nine point seven six acres? Looking at that wrong?
Uh, according to this, it says nine acre. Yeah, this is ours. This is comp number one at Hundred Fiftyth and Santa Fe. Okay.
I also want to hear, it looks to me like that was his fifth comp, Hundred Fiftyth and Santa Fe.
Okay, maybe. So six thirty-seven a foot, is what I'm showing. The, uh, second one at Highland Boulevard in North Pennsylvania, that is where Dick's Sporting is, supposedly he's going to build a new building. No, I don't believe that one has any frontage on Pennsylvania. I think it just has access. Yeah, right.
It's about half done at least.
Can I just ask, because it'll help us tremendously when we're looking at your package, if you'll just label what's the assessor's information and what's the taxpayer's?
Well, now, it does say on our, on our comps down here, it does say that Larry Stein County Assessor on, at the bottom of the page. So again, that one was, that one says twelve dollars a square foot. Is that right? Five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars per acre. By five forty-three, five sixty. Uh, two hundred thirty, going down to the one Hundred Sixty-Fourth and Western. Uh, that's five forty-two. And now that one does not have actual corner, it looks like it wraps around the corner. And then the last one, I think that's more of an industrial property off of Hundred Fiftyth and Kelling? Yeah, okay. So my main point is that the property, when they first bought, the subject property, when they bought it for one point six million dollars in twenty fifteen, there's been very few parcels of land that I've seen that values have actually gone down, especially in an area that's that nice, that travel. And knowing what I know about the development second place. That's all I've got.
You got the final word, Mr. Tannenbaum?
All right, first of all, I don't know if that's everything Group One. We deal with dozens of the properties out in land and everything. That, why, why did they build there? If they bought it that long ago? There's only one conclusion to that. Number one, they probably overpaid for the land, and the waiting makes sense and feasible to build a dealership, or it wasn't a good purchase to begin with, of land, because it doesn't make any sense. That's what they do, if they have dealerships. And when they buy land parcels, within a few years, they build dealerships. It makes zero sense that they would have waited this long and still have that land parcel out of this. There has to be a problem with the sale, or what they paid for it, versus the location in general. It doesn't make sense why they wouldn't have built a dealership there. And, um, it just doesn't. So that's the question right there, is why did they pay so much back then? Did they make a mistake? Well, the fact they haven't built a dealership in there, less need to believe that they made a mistake. And what's more important is, what is the evidence today of land comp? That's what matters. Number one, the county's even land comp, as we are, both in Oklahoma City and in Edmunds, Oklahoma. We're both using land comps, and some of them are in Edmunds because of the fact that they are hard to find, that size land comps. At least we can agree that we're all using the same size land comps. But they're both in Oklahoma and Edmunds, and both of us have them in both those cities. The, what it comes down to is the fact that, let's just go, their sale comp number two doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. It must be an amazing property, because it's an absolute outlier. According to their own land sales, all their own land sales and our land sales, that's a dollar a square foot, doesn't technically make any sense. How can that be compared when it's an absolute outlier? The other three comps they have, the first comp they have, that's kind of in question. That is the same comp we have, but we had it as CoStar has it, which is the fifteen acres, and then it will be valued at two fifty a square foot. Even if they are correct, that's six thirty a square foot, which is approximately what the subject is on for. But that is in question, and that is a, across the street from CVS, Seven Eleven, et cetera. I mean, why wouldn't you want to be there? That seems to be even a superior property, the value is the same as the subject. And their sale three, as they explained, is on for five forty-two a square foot. That's approximately a dollar less than the subject. The same as their sale four is on for five fifty-nine a square foot. So if you take their comps, especially not the outlier, their first comp to the third and fourth, and you take all of our comps except maybe comp five, which maybe we have acres incorrect, the CoStar says it sold as eleven point five six acres, so CoStar's correct, it did sell for all of it. But the point is our other comps, all of, except one, are either on a main street or near the freeway. I did admit one of our comps seems to be an outlier as far as not on a main street, et cetera. But the rest are, they're good commercial land sales. So overall, if you take all of our land sales into account, it sure seems like the land value could be closer to about five dollars a square foot, even including the county's land sales in our, so that's all we have.
Okay. All right, uh, we'll close the hearing on Agenda Item Two, BOE number four seventy-four, and go to Item Three. I guess this will be your last one. Uh, BOE number four eighty-nine, six thousand East Interstate, two forty Service Road. Account number R one forty-three, nine forty-three, oh sixty-five. What do you want to tell us about this one, Mr. Tannenbaum?
Well, we can tell you we at least appreciate Oklahoma County at certain times, because they do tend to fairly, um, look at things and at least take into account certain situations. Um, this property was reduced in value essentially to the value that we were asking for. So it went from ten million, five hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred to a value of seven million. So it wasn't, and that's the value on page two that we have, the requested value.
Seven million?
Seven million. So I think, you know, the, the county did look at this one, they did go to our requested value. Um, I personally was told to go forward on this one, um, and I'll just have to do it, because that's what I was told to do. But I will say that the reason why I was told to go forward is, and it gets confusing, that's why I don't know if it's worth to be able to do anything further. But on page eight, um, and nine and beyond is the actual income expenses of the subject property. The problem is that it's a brand-new property, in the sense that it was built in twenty twenty-three. Um, and the property itself, if you look at the, you know, the rent wall and the income, et cetera, I think August of twenty-three seems like when they, you know, were getting, uh, tenants, et cetera. It is a section forty-two, so that was taken into account in the valuation. But in a sense, what we were looking at was if you extrapolated, as far as, looked at, look, for five months, um, this is the income and expenses, well, what happened if this was the income and expenses? Um, you know, everything doubled, in a sense, the income doubled, the expenses doubled, and the cap rate stayed at about where it is for section forty-two, which is nine percent. What would the value then be? Well, we were coming up with a value with vacancy of maybe five to ten percent, of about five point five million. Now, if that's the case, we have to get the board to kind of look at this as, okay, they were getting this in five months. Does the board believe that, you know, if you just doubled everything, that'll be ten months? So in a sense, what I'm getting to is, uh, not to be too confusing, on page eight, the value we had was two point five million. But that was only for five months of, uh, income expenses. If you double that to ten months, it'd be five months. But then you have two months left over, um, of the year. But then that two months, uh, number one, you'd have to have full occupancy. But if you added, let's say, instead of adding sort of two months to a million, you added five hundred thousand, giving a little space, that's how we get about five point five million. Is that confusing somewhat? Yes. Is it possible? Yes. Um, and I, maybe that's why they had me go forward, just to say if the board would consider, what would the full year be with these five months that were there in twenty twenty-three? It would possibly give a value of about five point five million. But, uh, but we do appreciate that the value was lower than seven million, and we'll leave it at that.
Have, have, I've got a question. Uh, I noticed on the income, there's nothing, there's no column for any type of subsidy. Is there, is there typically a, if these are subsidized, is there typically a check from the government on these?
Let me pull this up. It really depends on the property, typically, yes, but I'm looking to see, oh, here we go. There is there, it is there, um, tenant-based subsidy, the, uh, about the sixth column down, I believe that's what they're saying. They're saying that they, the rent for residential, and then right below it says rent tenant-based subsidy.
Okay, I was looking at the actual income analysis, and there wasn't anything on that page.
Yeah, well, oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, typically what they do, um, now, it depends on the state, and, and I'm not as familiar with, with Oklahoma, but states like Wisconsin or, and possibly Oklahoma, there are certain counties that don't include the subsidy in the income analysis. Now, it's actually a core case in Wisconsin like that, and I believe in certain counties, no, Oklahoma, that's the case also. But that's something kind of at the discretion of analysis from yourself and the board. If the board is not familiar with any cases, or if they think the subsidy should be in the income analysis, then they're not going to, uh, lower the value.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So five point five is the, um, alternative amount that you're asking for, correct? Not four million?
Correct.
Okay, we'll hear from Ms. Essens.
So we looked at the information, the income information that was provided on this, and like I said, we only had five months' worth of data to go with. It is a section forty-two, but this would, this building is a little bit unusual for an apartment complex, in that it is just one building. Usually, when we have these type of problems where there's a high vacancy, it's because you have multiple buildings, and some of them aren't done yet. And so what we can do on those is say, okay, well, those buildings aren't occupied, they still have some building to go, and we'll just worry about the part that is occupied, okay? And so we'll value that section, and we'll leave the other section or other buildings as materials only, or to, you know, allow them to get finished and all. The problem with this one is, is that it's all one building, so it's all complete. And we can't, we don't have the option to go in there and allow for unfinished space, because then all, all, all the units had to be done. And so if you go back in this thing and reduce the value down to four million dollars, well, we can't go back in there and add value back in as if we would if it was another, another property, or one of those typical, uh, apartment complexes. Because there's no addition to the building.
This is that, is this Bryant or Sooner Road, or where, where is this? Sunny Lane?
Sooner.
Sooner.
So, we understand that they have a, a, a lease-up issue at this point in time, but they are operating, and they were, I don't know, maybe thirty-five, forty percent occupied at that, at that point. But.
So what, what, what is the significance of May, and what, it's not May.
Five months.
Five months, that's, that is a month.
They're saying the two point five million is based off of five months of.
Got a purchase date, finish date. Why are we only dealing with five months?
I didn't do anything with five months. They're saying they opened it up, and they only had five months of operating income and leases in there. So we're going to look. His point, our point, is that we're trying to work with an incomplete, an incomplete operating statement for lease and expenses.
So what did you base the seven million off of?
We agreed that we couldn't do anything, that we really couldn't get to where it needed to be based on the income information that we had, so we said, okay, we'll go with the seven million that he asked for.
So they originally asked for seven million, and then they came back and asked for now, well, in four, and now five point five, is that right?
No, and I understand where he's coming from, he's, you know, his client's telling him to do it. And I understand why he's doing that, but the fact is, is that we're kind of between a rock and a hard spot, because you have a completed building there, that's on January one.
Okay, so how can I understand, because you originally were at ten million, and then you agreed to the seven million?
Right, because he provided the, that kind of, at least some information regarding what, what the property was and how it was beginning to operate.
And the income, based off of the income.
What, what he was able to provide, yes.
Is he a brand-new building?
It's a brand-new building, it's a section forty-two. And we agree that when it operate, becomes fully operational, well, okay, section forty-two complexes, I don't know how much you're familiar with those, but they are rent-restricted properties. They may have subsidy, subsidies involved, we will, we will include those. But we also look at their, we look at those strictly, almost strictly income, because it's a government program, you know, so you're locked into that. You can't compare them to a market-based property, we don't. Now, we will run a much lower cap rate because of section forty-two, the way it's developed, they have a lot more equity into it at the very beginning, instead of borrowing thirty percent and having to, uh, you know, having to pay out, you know, the rest of whatever. They end up, and when they start out with, you know, fifty or sixty percent or more right up front. So, we agree that's a section forty-two, we understand the lease-up problem. If it was a multiple-building type situation, we could have gone ahead and done some of that. But we're locked in because we can't add value for unfinished buildings in the future. That, that's our, that's our dilemma, if you will. Well, I have better data a year from now. And we'll have better data a year from now. Now, one other question I would ask, is that this is a brand-new building, uh, we should be able to get, you know, uh, cost data on it. Had we had cost data, we might have looked at it. And section forty-two might have, they would have had to have had all of that stuff in, uh, available for the, uh, Oklahoma Housing Finance Board. So it's out there someplace. So, we did, we did best we could of what we had, and we agreed to allow him, you know, value reduction, what he asked for.
Okay, final word for you, Mr. Tannenbaum?
Uh, I think, uh, I would need the, uh, information.
Okay, so I thank you for your time and your information, and we'll meet on Friday. And tell me once again, are you in Texas?
Uh, no, we work a lot in Texas, a little bit, we're in Arizona.
Oh, that's right, that's right, I mean, I recognize your voice. Okay, so probably, uh, Tuesday maybe, you'll get a letter from us.
All right, no, good.
All right, thank you. Okay, goodbye.
Goodbye.
So I'm going to close the hearing on four eighty-nine, and now you guys can come forward. And we'll start with BOE, the fourth item on the agenda, we're going to take it in order, four seventy-five.
I think there is one that they are wanting to pull, I don't know which one it is. We're on the agenda, sorry.
Four seventy-five.
That's the first one. Okay, so we're, we're, you're not contesting that, four seventy-five. Right?
Right.
All right. Well, then go to, uh, BOE number, item number five, BOE number four seventy-six, seventeen sixteen, Signal Ridge, Edmunds.
Yes.
R twenty-two five six, ten twenty. Okay, which, what's your last name?
Uh, Bales, B A L, yes.
Okay, Mr. Bales, what did you say? Who, you're speaking, she's speaking? Okay, Mr. Bales, go ahead.
She might speak.
Okay. Okay.
Do you have permission to speak?
I don't.
Careful.
Anyway, um, okay, we're, I'm here to appeal an office building called Signal Ridge. It's in Edmund. It's a nice property, but the reason we're appealing it is because that it's currently uh, two-thirds vacant. And office buildings uh, right now are having some severe problems because it seems like a lot of people want to stay home, so they, um, after COVID, and so they, they, the building don't need the extra space. It's all around the city. So, we, we brought this to the assessor. We have um, income value, we have the rent roll. It shows that it's um, it's two, only two-thirds vacant. And they have it assessed at one point six million. Yes, um, one point six. We are asking that it be lowered to one point three because of the vacancy. We did find some comps, um, using both of those methods, we came up with an average of one point three million.
You, you were using a price per unit? Is that how you come up with the one point three, if I recall?
How?
Were you using the price per unit to come up with that one point three?
No, price per square foot.
Price per square foot.
Yes.
Ma'am, you have something to add? No, okay, so let's, let's hit wrong.
I, well, the thing is that.
No, that's all right, don't, just don't, I'm good.
Okay.
We're here for the assessor.
So the property apparently sold for one million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in March of twenty-two, and at that point in time, it was a hundred percent leased.
Yeah, so what was the sales price?
One million, four hundred and fifty thousand. Our value was last year, or this year, and I believe last year, one point six million, one oh six oh eight, one million, six oh eight. Our hearing officer uh, took the income information, and she looked at it, looked at his rental information and, and found that it looked like it was, uh, rental rate was about twenty dollars a square foot. And she applied that to come up with a, a PGI. She took out eleven percent vacancy at that point in time, and she found that off of a market survey. I can see how she did that. She, that brought down the effective gross to a million seventy-seven. She pulled out seventeen and a half percent expenses based on the information that was provided by Mr. Bales, and used a capitalization rate of nine percent. And her number came out to a million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six thirty-six on her income approach, which is just a little bit above what we currently have it on for. I do have, I do have some reservations of the fact that it was a one point four million dollar sale at, at a hundred percent occupancy, and now it is only a third occupied. So, um, yeah, there's probably a little bit of room to maneuver at that point during the current, given the current situation of the property. But I understand how she came up with her number, and why she, why she uh, did not lower the value at that point in time, at that point.
Do you have any expectations? Do you think we're just, we're just permanently work from home?
I think it's, it's hard to get off of that, because people just want to stay home. And I, I've heard from a lot of brokers that, you know, they'll have, one of their tenants call them and say, hey, can you rent the uh, second half of our property? Like, they'll have whole floor, and they want to cut it in half and sublease it.
Mid-lease, yeah.
Yeah. And it's happening all over the city. Yes, there, it, it'll be a while, I think.
Okay, so um, two-thirds vacant is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
As of December thirty-first?
Yeah.
Okay, anything you guys have? Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing on four seventy-six and go to item six on the agenda, which is uh, BOE four seventy-seven. Okay, this is thirty-four oh one Northwest Sixty-third. Um, account number R one four eight seven, eight nine, eight six, ten. Thirty-four oh one North, is that May? Is that May, or is that the May Cap and Park? Where is this?
Six, uh, sixty-third.
It's on the map right here.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Okay. All right, I'll have your part, well, okay.
Is that the building that's got the law firm on the side of it?
Yeah, maybe so.
How many?
Christensen.
Christensen, yeah.
Oh, that, yeah, then, yeah. Okay, what do you got for me on this one? What are you asking for?
Uh, we're asking for it to be lowered.
Why don't you just let her talk? What, what?
She didn't sign anything to talk, that's the deal.
I see.
I don't mind her talking, I'd ask if she wanted to.
But she is represented on the letter of authorization, I believe, as well.
Okay.
Yes, fake woman.
We were asking for it to be lowered to four million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Okay.
I'm sorry, to what? Four million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
What was it last year?
Seven point seven, same as what the assessor asked.
And is your argument the same, you have an occupancy issue, vacancy issue? What did you?
Forty percent. I'm talking to her.
Yes, we have, we have a huge, um, we actually have.
She's handing you the information. What, what is the vacancy rate?
We have a huge, um, it's, right now, it's forty percent vacant. Uh, one of the renters, when the property was purchased, they purchased this property for, you know, great leases. Unfortunately, the um, one entire floor um, vacated, and so it left the building forty percent vacant. And they're just, they're struggling. They have a, a forty thousand dollar loan payment um, every month, and they just can't, as you mentioned earlier, it's just hard for people to find renters right now. They're just really struggling.
Did that, did that client leave the, the lease early?
Uh, not to my knowledge. Not, they just did not renew. That was their expectation, that they would renew, and they did not.
I'm not telling you, you can't talk, this is, when I ask her a question, you don't talk. Okay, we'll hear from the, from the assessor.
So apparently, the building was a hundred percent leased at the time of sale in December twenty-two, and the sale price was eight and a half million dollars.
Okay. A hundred percent. That person that moved out, did they move out in twenty-three?
They did move out in twenty-three.
It was Chicago title.
Oh, yeah. They don't work from home, do they?
No, but they, I think they built their own building.
Okay.
So our, our income uh, analysis did have a lower value, but they also found some pretty decent sales that, that held the value pretty close to the, to the current value.
Let me just ask, when, when you do a sales comp analysis, is there uh, consideration given to the occupancy rate of the comp that you're using?
Yes.
Okay, great, that's fine.
At, at least it should be. I mean, I, I can't say a hundred percent, but uh, because I did look at one, at one of our sales comps, and it, it did say that it was seventy-seven percent leased at the same, and we had a verified letter at that, that was a good sale.
Okay.
Um, but there were three of them up there, and all of them were a hundred dollars a square foot plus, a little bit, a little bit more.
Okay.
But I, again, I go back to the fact that at this point in time, January one, that is not the same occupancy that it was at the time of sale. You know, because according, according to CoStar, it's a hundred percent occupied at the time of sale.
Okay.
It's not now. But we did, but we did allow some vacancy in our analysis.
Ten percent, fifteen, I'm sorry.
You're, at this moment, you're asking for a valuation of seven point seven?
That's, I, I believe that's.
What, what was, what was the, let's see?
We did, I believe, that's the same thing as it was last year, only.
Yeah, it's the same as last year.
Yeah, it's the same as, it's the same as last year.
Yeah.
So we didn't, we did not increase the value.
Which was less than the purchase price from twenty-two.
Right, which is, I'm sure one of the things that they, that they were looking at too.
Was vacancy.
Well, they were looking at the sale price, and they probably didn't catch the, uh, probably didn't catch that it had lost so much occupancy.
Well, why wouldn't they have if they're seven point seven versus eight and a half? What, what do you account for the less, lesser value?
I, I'm assuming that was, that was the model value they came up with whenever we set the values of, of office buildings a couple of years ago.
Oh, okay.
And if you set it up at a hundred percent vacancy and do your normal.
No, my models will have a vacancy.
Right, it'll have five or ten percent.
Yeah, I think in, in office buildings, they're usually a bit more.
The assessor does not know what the occupancy is at any given time. Uh, CoStar doesn't provide that, only if it's, it's a sale.
Correct.
So, the fact that the occupancy went way down, they wouldn't know that when they put the value on it until we bring them information.
Yeah. So that's pretty much all I have right there.
Did you, did you complain last year at the valuation of seven point seven?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, the, my, the client did not bring this.
Not yet, right.
Well, the client didn't bring the property to us to, to, to evaluate.
Last year.
Last year.
Correct.
I, I will say that, um, I did look up the assessor's comps, and uh, they're all full, so.
A W F U L or A L L F U L?
No.
Awful or awful?
Awful, they are all full.
Okay. Sorry. Just, I'm losing. Anybody else have any more questions? None? We're good?
I, I was gonna say, is, I, I don't think that's the case. I, I know that the Citizens Potawatomi, uh, the Union Tower Building.
That one, yeah, that one is not completely full, but it's, that's an, that was an owner purchase.
Yeah. This one's vacant.
Where is the Citizens Potawatomi?
They bought the uh, Union Plaza Building just up the road from here.
On, on Northwest Highway?
Yes, yes.
They used that as a comp.
Yeah.
And you have a problem with that?
Well, it's an iconic building, it's a huge, multi-story, beautiful thing.
The IRS should be located in, but that's a whole other story, okay.
I will say this, and that says, at that point in time, CoStar did say it was a high vacancy property, purpose-built, tenant.
It was our two, yeah.
The Citizens Potawatomi?
Yes. I don't know if they're gonna, I don't know if they're gonna take the whole building or not. But, so I see where they're coming from. We did look at income, we did look at sales, and uh, so that's all I got.
Okay. Nothing further, I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE four seventy-seven, go to the last item on the agenda, item number seven, which is BOE number four seventy-eight, fourteen zero zero one McCauley Boulevard, account number R one forty-seven twenty-six, one five five. Tell me about this one.
Me?
Either way.
Okay, just, just briefly, let me explain what the dynamic is here. I've been in business doing property tax work for thirty-five years.
Yes.
I'm ready to go. She is buying my company, and I'm training her. And so she hopefully.
If she's smart enough to buy your property, she can speak.
I have no problem with that, but she's due to the thing.
I come from a medical, I come from a physical background, and so my, I, I'm used to like, if I make a mistake, I might kill somebody. So for me, it's like, I don't want to.
You know, we're, I, I'm just really kind of kidding you.
I know you are.
Tell me about uh, BOE number four seventy-eight.
Okay, uh, same, uh, same theme. This property is eighty-two percent vacant. It's been vacant since COVID. Um, it was full of medical, um, and a lot of them moved out. I think there's one, one or two tenants left in there. Uh, they have been trying to lease it out, and it hasn't been going well. It's, it's not a terrible-looking property, it's a nice property. It's in a nice area, off the top of, I think, Memorial.
Memorial and?
Yeah, that's the uh, rest of Memorial Park Apartments that are up in the north side, is it? And that's the hospital right there.
Mercy right here.
Mercy, yeah.
Okay, I thought, yeah, I thought it sounded familiar, McCauley, it's over there by Mercy.
Yeah, on the north side of the, of the Kilpatrick there.
Is, um, Pemera?
They're in that shopping center there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, it's a nice property, it was developed by the owner of the property. He does not office in it. He um, rents it out. Like I said, it's eighty-two percent vacant, um, and it's been that way for a long time. We did a financial analysis, but as you would guess, it's like, it's a property's worth a hundred thousand dollars, which is not true, and um, and everything. We did pull comps and came up with a value of about one point six, but those comps were pretty full, so they're not really that comparable to this property. And so what we did is we just averaged it, we took the comp, the comp value and the income value and averaged it. Probably not the best way to do it, but we just didn't have much to work with. Uh, that comes up with a value of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand. You know, that's probably low, but.
What, what's the square footage of the land that's intended to this building? Because it's got a park, I'm not sure, right, that they don't share with anybody?
I don't know that well, wait a minute, let me see. Is eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-six square feet. Oh, wait a minute, no, it's not, I'm sorry, it's six point five, point six five acres, I'm sorry.
Coming from the medical field, one thing that we have noticed is that um, when COVID happened, people wanted to do telehealth. And since insurance is starting to pay for that, people don't want to go in unless they have to. First of all, because it's easy, second of all, because everybody's paranoid of getting sick. And so that has, that has caused a lot of medical issues. You know, medical buildings to become vacant because, you know, no one wants to rent them.
And it's right there next to that Mercy Heart Hospital complex, which they're building on. Okay.
Again.
They must have money.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor. What do you want us to value it at?
So we currently have it on for a million nine. The property was bought, now that's, wow, that was ten years ago, fourteen years ago. So, two and, uh, two point eight million dollars back in twenty-ten, so you can see how things have changed. The uh, there was a rent roll that was provided that only showed two tenants. So we, we looked at that, and we did a stabilized pro forma with thirty percent vacancy and using the uh, eighteen and, uh, eighteen and a quarter per square foot rents. And that came out to, and using a nine percent, nine and a half percent cap rate, it came out to a hundred and ten dollars a square foot, which is two million dollars. So I can see why uh, that was looked at. And then we did pull sales. And again, this is a nice-looking building, so the comps that they pulled would indicate that, okay, this should be doing better than that. I don't, I don't understand how this building could be vacant for so long, so high. But yeah, there's obviously some issues back there.
How long has it been vacant?
Since COVID.
Twenty-one.
Yeah, twenty-one.
And it is sitting not right on.
Yeah, it's, it's in the, it's in the back there. But.
Make sure you're sticking to your point now? Are you sticking to my point now?
Well...
Now, let me say again, what, what, what you said to me, when there is a sale, CoStar does not note at that moment the vacancy rate.
No, they'll have, CoStar will call the owner or the buyer and ask them what the vacancy was. What I'm saying with, if the, if the vacancy goes down and there's no sale involved, the assessor is not gonna know that.
That's, that's... And you...
Based on the thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
I'm, I'm sorry, yes, when we ran it, when we did a pro forma on the income, you know.
Was the cap rate that you used?
You used nine and a half.
Yeah, I used a higher cap rate and a thirty percent vacancy rate, which I believe she would, they would have found from the, uh, from the surveys. But I will say this is that yesterday I was looking at this on CoStar and I saw that it was coming up for auction. And it's supposed to be auctioned off at the end of June. And the starting bid...
Is five fifty.
So...
Five dollars and fifty cents?
Five hundred, fifty thousand. Now, I would, I have that in my wallet. I could pay for it, but I'm not going. That's the starting bid.
So, I'm not suggesting five hundred thousand dollars by any means, but it will be interesting to see how that happens. What, what happens. I would, I was just gonna say is that the owner, what is surprising to me about this thing is that the owner of this property is a local property owner that has many properties of different types throughout, throughout the county, throughout the city. So, I am really surprised that this property is performing as badly as it is. Yeah, but I can't do anything about that.
Another thing about this auction is, um, that, um, since we're not, we really have no idea what the value of this property is with vacancy being so low. If you're low, if you lower it and it sells for more than what you lower it to, the assessor will, can raise it up next year right then, because...
Yeah, and you know, we are, but, and I, and it's nice that we're having this conversation, but this was a value as of twelve thirty-one point three. So, um, that we'll have to take into consideration.
There's a lot there.
Yeah.
It was also the value in twenty-two, twenty-one, and twenty, one point nine for the last four years.
Did you guys know the, the occupancy at that time?
No.
All those years?
No, I haven't been looking at, at medical office buildings. That's all my...
You must have been upspring any time a bit, the occupancy return, right? You should have said something last year.
We only take the, the cases that they bring us.
Okay.
And, uh...
Right. Okay, it was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Good luck on your purchase.
I appreciate it.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE four seventy-eight and that'll conclude our agenda. Do you have any, any more comments or questions to invite? The people tomorrow will be the person we're on for.
I think a couple of, um, glass of a chip, I guess, will be in.
Okay. All right, yeah, later, Penimont.
You're good, John.
Second, our cyber.
My...
All right.
So, this is big.